We're starting the new year with a full house, so welcome everyone and let's stand for the. Okay, I'm gonna switch the order and welcome John Reiner to our meeting as a county board.
Thank you Bill.
So John brings a lot of experience and I hope you'll feel comfortable in sharing that experience with us. And certainly any questions that you have, we'll do our best to entertain them. If not, we'll get Elizabeth. So let's do the official role, please.
President Cook.
I'm here.
Vice President Dom.
Here.
Who's your friends?
Here.
Secretary Thomas.
Here.
Presti Gayton.
Here.
Presti Zimmerman.
President.
Presti Everard.
Here.
Are there any public comments either from the public here in the room or?
I don't see any in the internet.
Well, next is something that's bittersweet. We're gonna recognize Brad Woodson's retirement. And I have a plaque which I'm gonna leave from. Should we do the motion? Chris, would you give me a wish? To approve resolution twenty three oh one.
Yes, the motion to approve resolution number twenty three dash oh one, resolution recognizing the retirement of natural resources. Manager Brad Woodson after thirty one years of dedicated service. This is a Roman holiday we're like celebrating.
Should we second this? That's gonna second and call the roll, please.
Secretary Thomas?
Yes.
Presti Gayton?
Yes.
Presti Zimmerman?
Yes.
Presti Everard?
Yes.
Frederick Ritz?
Yes.
President Cook?
Yes.
Vice President Dom?
Yes. Wonderful, that essence, the man I'm asleep. I have the honor of reading this resolution. And certainly this is well deserved and got a picture of Brad there with his very engaging smile. And whenever I presented a problem or had a question was just the way Brad responded. He was always smiling and he always seemed to be happy that you were bothering him. Which I had occasion to do more than once, so I'm gonna stand just so that I can read this a little bit more efficiently. So this is resolution twenty three dash oh one, resolution of appreciation for dedicated service to Brad Woodson. And we've adopted this unanimously today, January twelfth, twenty twenty three. Whereas McHenry County Conservation District has protected over twenty five thousand seven hundred fifty acres of open space and thirty five conservation areas. Forty five miles of regional trails that provide access to more than a hundred and fifteen miles of integrated trail network. And we act to restore those lands to their ecological health. We offer educational programs which encourage appreciation of the natural environment. And the fundamental understanding of the environmental ethic. And we develop those lands for the safe, quiet enjoyment and interest of all our residents. Whereas the district is supported in its efforts by many dedicated staff and volunteers. Who engage in a variety of activities including protection of natural resources. And the flora fauna and people who share them, site and facility maintenance and improvement. Natural area restoration, trail clearing and monitoring, wildlife monitoring and care. Environmental, historical and cultural interpretation. Educational outreach programs and many other endeavors. And whereas Brad Woodson began with the district as a seasonal ranger or as a seasonal employee in region one. In May of nineteen eighty six and became a full time employee in December sixteenth nineteen ninety one. Working in the natural resource management department. And whereas Brad has provided excellent leadership skills. As the natural resource manager is the ultimate team player. And has provided valuable insight, professional expertise. And positivity to staff, volunteers and members of the public. Forging many friendships over the years with staff and volunteers alike. And whereas Brad has continually sought to bring new ideas on leadership and team building. To the land preservation and natural resource management division. And whereas Brad has guided and supported numerous staff initiatives. And was the driving force in the street's hunting program. Adding best management practices to the farm lease program. Expanding the seed collection program and has overseen countless bird and wildlife surveys. And whereas Brad has played a key role in planning and implementing large scale ecological restoration projects. Including the Lost Valley Marsh, the Nippersen Creek de-channelization. Moose Lake and School Springs Wetland Restorations, Wayneam Prairie Bioreactor. And numerous parody wetland and savanna restoration programs, projects. And whereas for the past thirty one years, Brad has gained immense satisfaction in seeing the fruits of his labor. Witnessing the former channelized stream beds flowing effortlessly. Numerous endangered and threatened species returned to restored areas. And prairie and woodlands thrive as a direct result of the natural resource teams land management efforts. And whereas Brad has decided to retire from his position effective December sixteenth of last year, let it be resolved that the officers and Board of Trustees of the McHenry County Conservation District. And here I think I'll channel all the other trustees and staff who Brad has worked with and who are not currently here in the room. We hereby convey our deep and sincere gratitude and heartfelt appreciation to Brad for his continued dedication to the mission of the district. And this resolution is incorporated, will be incorporated into the official records of the district. And then and that Brad Woodson received recognition through this resolution. And witness where all the Board of Trustees have subscribed their names to this document. So now Brad, you have to stand.
Thank you. That was wonderful.
You guys smile for the camera now.
Well. Thank you. Well, if I could say just a couple of things, I mean, it's, yes, it's amazing how quickly thirty one years goes by and actually a little more. Under as two, which when I was a teenager, believe it or not, but no, I was very fortunate to start when I did and got to do all the, like you mentioned, the biological surveys. Registration projects, working the hunting program and I work with everybody here, all these wonderful people. So I've already missed everybody. It's kind of thirsty coming back, but it's been, it's been a fantastic learning experience for me. And you know, learning a little bit along the way, a lot along the way. So I started my new job actually this week. So it's, you know, all that knowledge I have is built upon that. I put does things differently. So I'm on a new learning curve. So it's, but it's been great. So it's been wonderful experience here and appreciate everybody's support. Thank you.
And we look forward to hearing from you. So don't be a stranger and stay in touch and give us updates on what's going on in Iowa. So the next item is presentation of the fiscal year twenty twenty four. And if combined annual budget and appropriation, which is several pages in length. But I, Elizabeth or Andy, who's gonna?
I don't have a presentation prepared. There's only, I think the board summary gives a detail and I think there's about six changes from the last time we went through it. The biggest change, the most level one is that in preliminary draft, we looked at included all eight hundred thirty five acres. That are gonna have to be pulled out of farm production in compliance with the IDN R grant. It included all the revenue, the exception of a hundred seventy seven acres that we know are getting pulled out of this fifty four. But as we look to the plan and the agreement, we have to segregate all the revenue with all eight hundred thirty five acres. So the tenant, this tenant budget in front of you, that's the main chain is the hundred ninety six thousand dollars of revenue tied to that other acre. It's a part of the general fund to be reported into the dedicated accounts fund, the land transfer. And there's some associated expenditures, it's almost about ninety thousand dollars for restoring and seeding those lands. It's also that would go to the dedicated account.
Does anyone have any comments about any of this? Obviously we will. We're gonna vote on this next week. So we have a few days to sort of digest it. And as Andy said, it's essentially what we've approved with these additional adjustments, which are pretty straightforward. So please review this at your leisure. And if you have questions, bring them to Andy or to Elizabeth before the meeting, or bring them to me. And then we'll try to get this approved next week.
And if I can say, if there's any issue reading the document, if you see something that you feel is unclear, a strainer's error that we need to correct, you can do that. When you approve it next Tuesday night, we'll have a newspaper, our ordinance will be published in the newspaper. The budget goes on review for thirty days and then we'll have our public hearing and this is all detailed out in the budget document. It is something that the board has been familiar with. And then in February, we'll have the public hearing at the committee of the whole. And then you'll approve the final budget, you know, that following at the regular meeting and then it'll pass over to the county. John, the tentative budget on Tuesday, we have a letter that we prepared as we always do, we'll send it over to the chairman, county administrator Austin. And then they can advance that on to the fellow county board members, just so everybody's familiar. But we'll end up, you know, planning, I think I sent out dates of our March dates so that we are in front of the county at the March, so it's all in order by April first. And then the other, if you want me to bring up, I did discuss, so our meetings, our regular meetings. Now that we're under this new schedule are the same night as the county's regular meetings. So for our March meeting, because we want to be present when our budget is being accepted. And so we are going to move our regular meeting to what would be our cow in March, which would be that Thursday, the Thursday. And so that's the plan. And then we all, I think you should join us, we'd love to have everybody over the county for that Tuesday.
So when, so the regular meeting is March, yeah.
March sixteen.
No, it will be a cow, but the Tuesday of the regular meeting. You're invited to go to the county to support our presentation. But we will try to have our cow and sort of business meeting the Thursday before.
Okay, all the same time. Oh, that's right.
So we just want to be, yeah, one Board of Trustees meeting. All right. Well, if we can move along then to the new business. The weather threw us a curveball with the Birdview Education Center. So John, are you gonna give us an update about our leaking bikes?
Yeah, let's see, on the twenty seventh, DAF arrived back from the holiday and there was water dripping into the basement and all over the basement. Figured out that a pipe had burst on an outside wall, actually a fairly small pipe that creates a lot of water. And we had it shut off and cleaned up. We got service master in right away to drying out, I think within twenty four hours, they were on site carrying out things, opening things up. It's an interesting process. I hope none of you ever have to go through it. I've gone through it a few times here. Basically, they tear off, they open the baseboards and get air flowing back into the walls and tear down the ceiling that needs to be torn down. And you know, get anywhere that, anywhere that air can't get into, they open up so that air can get through it. Fans were everywhere, heaters were everywhere and they left it on for three or four days. And then came back and they do the testing and they test all the walls and they test the ceiling with little probes. And get the moisture content and figure out how much moisture is still in there and then that determines what the next step is. In this case, they didn't have to do any more. They basically pulled off offsite, which opened the door then immediately for, you know, going in and doing all the assessment of what we need to do for restoring it and getting it back online. They, about a week ago, I met down there with staff who came up with a plan on it. What we're going to be doing is looking to get a contractor in to take care of the, the amount of damage is not that much. I mean, the floors were all tile on top of concrete. And so therefore that's, you know, just wipe the dirt off when we're in dry. So, so we have no expense with that. We have some small expense on some walls and plumbing that needs to be done. We are gonna go ahead and do some additional insulation. We did identify the insulation, the light in that particular area, R eleven, should be R nineteen at least. So we're targeting something like that. We hope to come back in next week with where our fingers are crossed that we'll actually have an estimate from a contractor. I know Perry and team are working on getting, they did have an estimator out there or will have to try to get an idea of what it's actually gonna cost. And then we can kind of package that up and hopefully present that next Tuesday. If we don't have what we're really looking for, we've got a window to get, to get the reconstruction done before the spring field trip season begins down there. And if you look at, you know, when you have monthly board meetings, we'll be right in between the board meetings to actually get a contract. What we're looking for is that you would give a little bit the authorization to approve a contract. And then ratify it after a contract that supports in the best interest of the district. It has to go through Pergama's adjusting process and all that stuff. So it's very similar. Lost Valley Visitor Center plumbing issue a number of years ago. That time maybe we'll work when that happened, but we'll have numbers next week and be able to explain more at that one time. We're not talking hundreds of thousands of dollars. We're talking, you know, a much more minor number than that, you know, I'm hoping less than one for it, but that's, that's just again.
And then general, I mean, does our insurance cover the majority of that?
Yes, they've got to pull the conservation district, that's a thousand dollars. So we'll stand the first thousand and then Pergama picks up after that. They probably won't pick up the improvements that we love to do, but that's for, we don't. As I, as I pointed to it and talked with the staff, I said, really, I don't ever want to deal with this. So let's just tear the wall out and make sure that we get it all.
Is the facility open and usable or?
Yes, that's a good, good question. We were able to section off the two bathrooms that were damaged the most. Unfortunately, the buildings had bathrooms on all three levels. And so we're able to, yes, have the, I mean, within, by Thursday, this happened on a I think about a week and a half later, we were back open.
Are our thermostats turned down when the buildings are not occupied, for example, holidays and, and weekends?
Yes, we do have them on a schedule like that, but what we typically do is in any of that cold weather situation, we'll put out an order and just keep them level and keep them up there. So we do that in our shops, we do that in our buildings, you know, just to protect cold weather.
Any questions for John? Anyone who's had a flooding issue or a fire at home and relate to what's involved in a cleanup and repair situation. It always seems to occur over weekends and holidays. So John, while you're standing, next is vehicle replacement purchase update, Illinois State Bid Purchasing Contract.
That is a, that is a saga and so we we have been trying to buy vehicles for, I bet it's approaching three year. The COVID, when that came about, a lot of things were set aside at that point in time. And, and of course we had all the supply chain issues that we've had in the last several years. Anybody that's tried to buy a car will know what I'm talking about there. So we have vehicles that are re-appropriated, I believe, at least twice. Is that correct Perry?
A couple of heavy.
Yeah, a couple of heavy days have been, have been replaced, re-appropriated because we just can't buy it. We finally have a window to buy them. We came to you in October with what our best estimate was at that time. We did not have hard numbers. They were not available. So as we began putting the order together, we realized that the way this was all kind of shaking out, we needed to come back even and give you an update as to what it is. And now we have hard numbers. We actually found out that by buying a couple of boxes, we're just gonna buy the chassis. Buying a couple of boxes on that and leaving the, on the existing trucks and selling them is actually a more economical way to go forward. It does require that we spend more money on the, on the front side, buy the trucks. So that's what we're, that's what we're holding doing here is to buy the chassis, the trucks, the boxes and plows all together. When we realized and looked at it and went out and got cost estimates on it, even on a local, we realized that it was much less expensive to buy them off the state, state then. This is one of those that I implore us to not go by, let this go by because we don't know when the next time they're gonna be allowing us to order trucks. So that's it in a nutshell.
All right. So I, and I think the detail of that is in our packet. So everyone either reviewed it or will review it and we'll be voting on that next week.
And if you have questions, please give us a call and let us know. I try to be as simple as possible, very complicated. Thank you.
Thank you. Elizabeth, six point three is a review of our regular meeting agenda items for next week. I had a chance to look at that and I didn't see anything that was a surprise or anything that I questioned that the board feel that they want to pull anything, change anything. Please speak up or speak with Elizabeth or me sometime between now and then. Moving along to six point four, proposal on relocation easement at Coral Woods. There was a lengthy explanation of that and I think Val is here to sort of summarize it and tell us basically why we're gonna hold the line and ask for those folks to sharpen up their offer.
I think you just covered it. Well. Well, so at Coral Woods, I'm around twenty, in two thousand and seven, we acquired a hundred forty seven acres. That had no frontage, but the seller had frontage that they retained about ten or eleven acres that they were planning on commercial purpose. And now it's called the EdgeX parcel. That wasn't the original seller, but that's that yellow parcel that's shown there. That was shown there is the convert, future commercial that the, this easement that we have goes over. Let's go to the, the next slide down.
Give me a second, Val, I have this requisition with everyone that's remote, you can see.
Yeah. So yeah, that's, that's fine. So that, that red serpentine shows what is existing now. There's a sixty foot wide ingress easement. Attached to that is a twenty by thirty foot sign easement. I think that's the dimensions of it. But that was what we, we got because the development plans did not come into fruition. The agreement with the seller was they were gonna develop this right away. But if they didn't, they had to grant us a permanent easement within five years. They, their development did not happen. So we just placed this easement in between existing farm buildings that were on the parcel just. But the, but the agreement that went forward was that we would agree to relocate that with, at a mutually agreeable location. So we renewed that, well, EdgeX is actually the holding company for the for the, I think it's Bird Community Bank down there that acquired the property and do a foreclosure so that, so that it's whole, it's like a bank owned property. And so we, two times we agreed to renew this agreement over, for a four year period to relocate it. It was just renewed in January, if you recall, last year. But anyway, so there's a new entity called DYN or First Midwest Commercial that wants to buy this property. And so they want to relocate the easement to go in concert with their development plans. So they made, presented us with a modification of the easement which is attached. I reviewed it with our legal real estate council, Roger Stell and Nelson Pratil and Stell. And we just came up with several deficiencies to protect the district's interest. It's, it's just too simple, the way they want to do it. I mean, we can, we can manage the fact that they do not own the property yet. We could go ahead and do an agreement with DYN and then it would become effective even when they acquire the title. But it's hard to evaluate the whole thing fully because it's, it's based on a proposed layout. It's, it doesn't have the engineering done, doesn't have the zoning in place. It doesn't have the I dot approval for the location. So we're willing and cooperative, wanting to work with them, but there's some things about the agreement that we can't just say, okay, let's move it to where you say now because it's, it's going to be speculative. One of the things that Roger pointed out that he really took a strong exception to was the fact that the development plan, and there's a proposed layout, I think in the plan. You probably couldn't see it, but it's advanced to maybe the last slide in that whole collection. There's a proposed layout plan and, and on the on the, on the far edge of the right edge of that layout shows the straight sixty foot easement, but it, but all those parking spaces along the retailer are are included in that easement. So it's actually being used with, as parking. So it really does, it diminishes the value of the easement. It diminishes the value of the, the property that the easement serves. So, you know, we don't think that would be an acceptable use of the property of the easement for, for parking. But anyway, Roger believes that there should be an agreement to go along with this that would kind of set forth all the, these conditions that, yeah, we want to work with you on this. But what about actually building the roads? You know, these are just lines on paper. They haven't got their retention, stormwater retention figured out fully. So I mean, for all we know, these lines could end up going over water, you know, so that would make it difficult to build a road. So, so we had proposed, why don't you just build the road as part of the agreement to relocate it and you don't have to worry about the engineering and stuff like that. So those are some considerations that we think should be addressed in an agreement where if they would maybe set aside some funds to actually build the road when they got ready to do it. Ask for those, pay for our attorney's fees and those types of things. So in a nutshell, we would like to go back to that with a list of things that we think would be important to address in an ancillary agreement to, to work with them on, on relocation.
Do we need just a consensus to allow Val to pursue this? Do we need the, just a, a consensus to allow Val to pursue this, uh, line of attack or do we need to vote on something?
No, there's no, no, I just, I'm looking for just your agreement that we're on the right track with this, this approach.
Certainly seemed logical to be.
Anybody have any questions?
Sat the eyes and cross the.
I mean, it's a lot to unpack in this, but.
And then looking for their legal fees to give us some dollars so we can proceed.
Well. Well, we would, part of the agreement that Roger's suggesting is that they, they pay our legal fees and he's willing to cap his, what, what he thinks would be reasonable. Uh, to do that so that they had, so they have some knowledge of what that might be. Um, but, um, but he doesn't think we should bear the cost of, of working this out for them. Uh, especially since they don't even own the property yet.
Well, I thought your packet was, you know. Very, uh, complete and it's made this approach seem like the logical way to proceed and. Seems like a lot of these things, all of a sudden there's a hurry. They want to do it.
Yeah.
You know, they want, but, you know, I think we're in a position to.
Yeah, one, one thing that we, we had emphasized from the beginning of these folks is that. We don't wanna be a obstacle to the development of the property and we want to make it possible, but we can't. Diminish the value of the district property and we have interest to protect.
You're only gonna do it once, so wait, do it, but.
All right, thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you. All right, Elizabeth, seven point O is the executive director.
Okay, normally, I'm gonna just go back up to the consent agenda for next week here, just on one I, and I did wanna touch upon. So you have the second reading of our personnel policy and procedural manual. Um, in reviewing, we did find one minor scripters error. I'm sure there's probably more than someone, as they look into the detail, will pop out on us, but nothing substantive. Um, but we did want to provide some additional clarification and I talked with council. Under seven point oh-nine and seven point oh-nine is the policy that relates to lunch and rest periods. And there's been some discussion, we've got also the most recent, um, the amendments were made here with the one day and seven, um, uh, Rest Act. Um, there was in the I A P D thing yesterday to kind of talk a little bit about. Uh, government employees being exempt or not exempt. And I've talked with council and government employees and council's opinion. As well as Paderma's uncovered is it's not explicit and therefore this applies to us, we will follow the law. Um, we are not going to be exempting from these provisions. Um, the other thing that we wanted to ensure. And council was agreeable, um, the language before, and we had taken that from, from Paderma, it just had straightforward employees who work. And we're adding in non-exempt employees because the, uh, lunch and rest periods do not apply to salary exempted employees. And so to avoid and to clarify from our employees that there is a distinction, the law is there. That we're gonna go and, and add that language just so it's very clear here, uh, added to our, our policy. So that's the only.
The term exempt means you're exempt from federal labor law. Non-exempt means the law does apply to you, so you wouldn't pay overtime to a salary employee, as they say.
So those are the changes that we're making there. Um, under director's report, um, I just wanna start off and say, uh. John and operations team, um. John, Perry, Larry, and then the group of planning that got involved with, uh, having to remediate that during the holidays, they did an amazing job and. Unfortunately, experience breeds the, you know, how to move, uh, but they, they did it and, uh, again, great results. I just wanna shout out to them. They really, uh, did a phenomenal job. Uh, you've read in the Wiki While, we've been successful as the foundation, um, with obtaining some word on some grants. And so, uh, finally through the work through the boat access and development grant, and that was how many years, eighty, did you put that through three years ago? At least two, yeah, a long time ago. So finally we're getting money for that. And hopefully we'll be successful with the Ozland funding for that, uh, area of the hollows as well. Um, I wanna congratulate Gabe is here this evening and Gabe, uh, has been promoted to our new conservation ecology manager position, so. Uh, Dan, Gabe, congratulations on that. And, uh, John Peters has stepped up. He's in the interim position of our restoration ecology manager position. That position has been posted internally. And, uh, we'll be able to hopefully come back to relatively soon with, uh, the results. Of that. Um, again, thank you to Andy on the budget preparation and details that you have in front of you. So again, please do. Review that and, uh, provide any feedback. And then, and the big news, I think, is with Springfield and then what's going on. So lame duck session, they got really busy. For the very end and they passed a lot of stuff with a lot of, without a lot of debate on certain things and we're just kind of unpacking that right now. Um, that, uh, and one of them, um, that is a particular one that caught our attention. Right away was Senate Bill two oh eight, which is the paid leave for all act. And they exempted park districts and school districts, but forest preserve districts and conservation districts were not exempt from that legislation. So first thing, I got it, I called. Our, our colleagues in, in I A P D that represented us and said, what happened? And I was assured that they had initially listed an amendment that would exempt this because we usually run together whenever they come forward since they represent all of our interests. Um, but, uh, clearly they saw us as a countywide organization. And so with that, basically it's addressing, uh, time off, paid time off for your part-time and seasonal staff. As well. And currently that is something that we don't provide, that'll apply for, um, uh, businesses and after the reason government unless you're a school district. So, um, I don't think that in reviewing it is not going to be, uh, based on our number of employees in those categories for us, something that, uh, would be, uh. Too hard to, to take on, but, uh, we'll continue and learn more at the state, uh, conference that'll be happening in January. And then, um, with that, uh, the newly elected officers and you and I general assembly, they've done their leadership positions. So a lot of moving, uh, parts there, just as the county did with the, the receiving of, who's on my committees. And, uh, we will be down in Springfield on May second and May third for Park Stay at the Capitol. And so if there's a board member that has an interest in joining, uh, us down there, um, that would be great. And then at the luncheon at the conference, we do have Senator DeWitt, uh, will be joining us, representative of us as well, will be sitting at our table. Uh, for, uh, the luncheons and we'll be kind of having their ear. So as we think of things we wanna discuss with them, uh, we should try that and, and, um, Dr. So. That's all I have.
Very good, right. Under other, I'm gonna mention that I, I had, uh, Elizabeth send out a notice and. So I have the opportunity to, uh, sit in on the Crepe Zoom meeting and I saw that Gabe was also. Sitting in and in the audience and I found it very interesting and the featured speaker was someone from. Uh, the Washington DC area who, um, gave a presentation about the. Uh, My Waterway, which is an app that's available at E P A dot gov. And it is nationwide and they were specifically focusing in on McHenry County and Tishwaki, but. There's a lot of information available there to, uh. For anyone, for the public and, uh, and agencies such as ours and. They compile data from different federal organizations about stream quality and, um. Groundwater and so forth. So it, it's just, uh. You're confined at home and you wanna get lost for a little while looking at your favorite stream or creek or wet spot. You can find it on, uh, My Waterway at E P A dot gov. All right, um. Any public comments?
There are none.
Good, um. So I think we're gonna take a motion to go into executive session at this point, um. Do we need to adjourn, uh, the regular meeting? Or just take a motion? Do I have any, uh?
So I'll make a motion to go into executive session pursuant to two C eleven probable litigation and two C twenty-one. Review of closed minute, closed session minutes of the Open Meetings Act by I L C S twenty-one twenty-one dash one.
Thank you, Ray. And then a second please.
I'll second.
All right, Chris, seconds. Call the roll.
Senator Prince?
Yes.
Vice President Dom?
Yes.
Secretary Tomlin?
Yes.
Fessy Gaten?
Yes.
Fessy Zimmerman?
Yes.
Fessy Emmerard?
Yes.
President Cook?
Yes. Okay.
Okay, so we're going to, for those that, uh, in Zoom land, uh, there is no action out of executive session, but we will come back into open session, uh, once we. Thank you, have a good night.
And so I think we've. Convened and we're gonna take a roll and.
Uh, Fessy Gaten?
Yes.
Secretary Tomlin?
Yes.
Fessy Zimmerman?
Yes.
Senator Prince?
Yes.
Fessy Emmerard?
Yes.
Vice President Dom?
Yes.
President Cook?
Yes. Our motion to adjourn.
Well, second.
Seconded by, uh, Linda.
But, uh, Vice President Dom?
Yes.
Secretary Tomlin?
Yes.
Fessy Zimmerman?
Yes.
Senator Prince?
Yes.
Fessy Gaten?
Yes.
President Cook?
Yes. Thank you all. Yeah, John, thanks again.
Yes.
All right, folks.